Ready? Good evening. I'm David Assad, the Chairman of the Zoning Board of Appeals for the City of Fall River. It's 6:00 PM on Thursday, November 21st, 2019. We are meeting at one government center in the committee hearing room. This is a meeting of a local public body and as such is subject to the provisions of Massachusetts General Law, Chapter 30A, Section 20, commonly known as the open meeting law. Pursuant to Massachusetts General Law, Chapter 30A, Section 20, subsection F, I hereby notify all persons in attendance that this meeting is being recorded with both video and audio devices. Our recording secretary this evening is Brittany Farrier, the lady to my left, and is recording an audio version. And Fall River Government TV Pamela Martin is recording both a video and audio version. If anyone desires to make an audio, video, or combination recording thereof, please notify me now and I shall make a public announcement of your intention. Present this evening are permanent members from my left to right, James Corkins, Attorney Carolyn Marasette, Vice Chair, alternate members Dan Dupere and David Saber. Brittany, have all petitions to be considered and properly advertised and all interested parties notified in accordance with the rules and regulations of the Zoning Board of Appeals in Massachusetts General Law, Chapter 48, as amended?
Yes.
I declare the November 21st, 2019 regularly scheduled meeting of the Zoning Board of Appeals of the City of Fall River open for such business as shall regularly come before it. I was remiss in not advising everyone that the gentleman to my right is William Rock, Director of Planning for the City of Fall River. I remind all persons presenting before the Board, including the petitioners, abudders, and anyone in support or anyone opposed to the petition, that your presentation should be limited to three minutes. Questions and responses must be directed through the Chairman. The Board's rules and regulations direct the Board to specifically look for information which supports the petitioner's claim. As such, the petitioner should identify and factually support the basis for the petition. I hereby advise the petitioners and all interested persons that this Board is the Zoning Board of Appeals. This Board's authority exists pursuant to Massachusetts General Law, Chapter 48, and is limited in scope and deals with the use of land as regulated by Chapter 86 of the ordinances of the City of Fall River. Additional permits, licenses, reviews, and/or approvals may be required for the specific development and/or use, which is the subject of the petition before the Zoning Board this evening. The clerks in the building, planning, engineering, and licensing departments are competent in the discharge of their duties as clerks. They are, however, not lawyers and are not competent to give legal advice. The action taken by this Board has a real and lasting effect upon the title to your real estate. I urge all petitioners to seek competent legal counsel before filing your petitions and after a decision of the Board has been made. For example, there is a city ordinance, 2015-11, Section 10-1, requiring site plan reviews. A copy of the ordinance is available at the City Clerk's Office or from the Planning Department. I remind everyone that the Building Inspector is the zoning enforcement authority and you are here this evening because the Building Inspector has determined that your proposed action is contrary to the City of Fall River zoning ordinances. The City Charter, Section 9-18 mandates that all multiple-member bodies develop and adopt rules or policies for public comment. We have adopted such a policy, which in short provides for citizen input on zoning board specific matters and at the end of this meeting. A sign-in sheet is on the table in the back of the room. Finally, I disclose that an official copy of the Fall River zoning ordinance is available at the City Clerk's Office. One cannot rely on the online zoning ordinance. I cannot participate in Agenda Item 02 this evening. Therefore, the Board will consider this item first with Attorney Carolyn Marasette acting as Chair. Are there any questions before we begin?
All right. Let me, Carolyn?
Agenda Item 02, General Seer, 226 and 236, Atlantic Boulevard, lots A, 1536 and 37. This is continued from last month's meeting. Variance request to modify the existing lot line between the two existing structures and alleviate an existing encroachment. Waiving requirements in the Estes script.
Good evening. For the record, my name is Dan Aguirre. I'm a Senior Project Manager, Site Tech Engineering with addresses here in the city as well as Dartmouth and Marshfield. As the Chairwoman stated, this application came before you a month ago and we tabled due to a few of the members that had a conflict of interest in regards to it. So we have a property that is located at the intersection of Atlantic Boulevard and Bryan Street. It's an existing single-family dwelling at 226, map A15 lot 36, and then another single-family home adjacent to it, map A15-37. These properties have been held in separate ownership. You'll see two different deed references referenced on the plan as well as the application. At some point in time, the homeowner of 236 built a small one-level addition, it's almost like a, it's like a greenhouse kind of a structure, off the north side of the structure. As you can see, it has those two little angled corners and then extends about four or five feet over the property line. The property owners are in the process of selling this property as an estate and the closing attorney and his independent research discovered this encroachment. And that brings us to you to make the modification between the two lot lines with a five-foot setback to that structure as it exists. So A1536 would be reducing its area from 4505. It's already a pre-existing non-conforming lot. It'll be down to 4,136 square feet. And then A1537 will go from 4505 to 4863. So it's a pretty straightforward application. It's to alleviate the encroachment so that the properties can be conveyed to new entities without having this cloud in the title. If you have any specific questions, it'd be more than glad to take them to you.
Do any members of the Board have questions? Is there anybody here in favor of this petition? Is there anyone here opposed to this petition? Is there a motion from a member of the Board?
Motion to grant.
Is there a second?
Second.
All those in favor?
Thank you very much.
Name is back. So Agenda Item number three and Agenda Item 01 go hand in hand, but procedurally it makes sense to do Agenda Item 3 first, then we'll do Agenda Item 01 and then we'll pick up the rest of the Agenda Items. So we'll start with Agenda Item 3, Horatio Maria Soars, 820 to 822, 834, King Philip Street, Lot B15, 16, and 14. This is a variance request to convert the existing first-floor function hall area into four additional apartment units and keeping the existing restaurant on the first floor with two apartment units on the upper floors along with the existing three-family dwelling, waiving requirements in the BL district, lot size 9,973, plus or minus square feet.
Good evening. Again, for the record, Dan Aguirre of Site Tech Engineering, here this evening on behalf of Horatio and Maria L. Soars. Mr. Soars is here this evening, sitting behind me. Some of you may know him as the owner of the Luis Sotano Restaurant dating back many, many years. Had a successful business there, but is, as you can see, in no detrimental comments, but Mr. Soars is getting up in age a little bit and is trying to cut back a little bit on the day-to-day activities in the restaurant. So he approached me with regards to trying to do something with this structure. It's a very large structure, has a very lengthy history, a lot of it which will probably bore you, but I do want to give you a little bit of the history behind it. When we started off with this project, there was an existing restaurant and two unit apartments above it on the second floor. Directly adjacent to that, there was an existing three-family dwelling with a large garage structure in the back. In 1989, Mr. Soars applied for and received a variance allowing the subdivision of these two structures, allowing the restaurant and the two units, two apartments, to stay on Lot 16, and then the three-family dwelling remain on Lot 14. That variance was approved, Form A plans done, and everything was clean. In 1993, Mr. Soars came back before the Zoning Board of Appeals, petitioning the Board to allow him to construct a rather large function hall to the back of the property, which is basically just about doubling the size of the building. In that application, which is in your packets and the plans that went with it, when that variance was heard, it was granted and he had the ability to create this new function area. But in doing so, this function hall, when it was shown on the plans this way, crossed over what was the lot line that was created in the '89 variance. So in that plan that you see, those two lots then merged. So that brings us to today's state where we technically have one parcel of land, approximately 9,300 square feet. As the Chairman stated, it houses an existing three-family dwelling, two bedrooms in each unit at number, my eyes are deceiving me, 834, the restaurant, the two apartments, and then the function hall. So again, what Mr. Soars would like to do is take that rear addition, again, which is rather large, and construct four one-bedroom apartments within it. No more than four. If size-wise and the little layout of things, you know, maybe it'll be three, but no more than four units, one bedroom. This is a one-level addition, if you've ever been by there, but it is rather large and does not have the need for it anymore. Business was not keeping up with the cost of what had maintained that building, and again, he is trying to downsize with some of the real estate. So we have this very large structure, although created through a variance, now have a structure that really does not serve a purpose. So he would like to go forward and make the four one-bedroom units. In the '93 petition, and we'll bring this up now because we're going to have to deal with it sooner or later, during that petition, there was a discussion regarding parking. And in the discussion, in the minutes of that meeting, again, which I included in your packet, Mr. Soars made the argument at the hearing that he did have the ability to park across the street on King Philip Street. No number of spaces, no specific land area, but it was mentioned in the minutes of the meeting. It was, however, not mentioned in the decision as a condition that he needed to provide X number of off-street parking spaces. So over time, he was using the land directly across the street, which you see on the plan labeled as 1, 2, 3, and 4, as a parking area. And it served its purpose. On weekends when they had large functions, they would fill that parking area. Now with that going away, and we're requesting to make the four one-bedroom apartments, we are creating a mechanism where we can create a parking lot across the street and through the granting of this variance, if the Board sees fit, and the granting of the second variance, will tie these two properties together so that the apartment use and the existing restaurant use, which is being downsized, will have dedicated parking across the street. Now, it is a reduction from what is required for parking for a restaurant of that size and the apartments. However, with implementing one-bedroom units and existing two-bedroom units, what we've done is prepared a little parking summary for you over on the side, and at the total between what we can reserve on Lot 1 across the street and on street, we'll be able to provide enough parking to meet the requirements of 37 total spaces. So we'll have 22 dedicated spaces, which right now, none of the apartment users have them, and we can move forward trying to resolve some of the outstanding real estate matters that Mr. Soars has in this neighborhood. So with regards to hardship, we do have a very large structure that occupies the entire building with basically no need for that use. He could seek out another commercial user for that space. However, in the neighborhood, and he owns a number of apartments in this neighborhood, he feels that it's better to reduce and get rid of that potential commercial use because it is surrounded mostly by residential users and minimize the restaurant back to what it was originally. Do you have any specific questions regarding the logistics of it? I know there's a lot going on in one application, but I'd be more than glad to answer any questions that you might have.
Could you address the hardship? I mean, 20 years ago, you specifically sought this relief, and now you're claiming it's a hardship, so...
Well, no, no. Exactly. And what I stated is it's a self-imposed hardship because it was through zoning relief. If this was a pre-existing non-conforming structure, then I would argue that, well, we have this large structure, nothing else to do with it. What we do have in this situation that is specific to this parcel of land is that we have a structure that the owner has no need for, and again, rather than imposing another commercial use on the neighborhood, which he could by right, this would seem to work out better for everyone. Now, something very important is that this is already a non-conforming condition due to the number of apartment units that exist currently. So right now, we have a total of five apartment units in a BL district that only allows three. So if we had a conforming condition and only had three apartments, then I can understand that we're taking a conforming condition and making it a non-conforming condition. But the non-conformity has nothing to do with the fact that we have this addition that we now want to do something with. The lot is non-conforming just by the number of units that currently exist on. However, we could not proceed as a special permit as we normally would because the addition was granted by a variance. So we do have to come back. It's almost like a modification of the variance that was previously approved. However, there's not a mechanism to do that, so we do need to seek new relief.
It's in a BL district.
It is in a BL district.
BL district maximum is three, three units is what's allowed.
That's correct.
So you've got this existing three-family dwelling, which got merged into the whole, as I understand it, where the existing three-family dwelling would have been a pre-existing non-conforming.
Well, it had gotten a variance because when it all started, that's...
Your variance has caused your problem, are causing your problem.
That's correct.
So now, now I'm left with, or we're left with, a BL district. We've got a merged lot. We've got an excess number of units that cannot exist under the current zoning ordinance.
That's correct.
That says maximum BL is three. So now we're looking to get a variance from that and add a total of two...
Nine.
Nine units in total on this lot.
Two. Four. That's correct.
And two-nine.
Okay. No, I'm just, I don't know how I get around the, yeah, the Board has, yes, the Board has some authority, but I don't know whether we have the authority to go beyond because we're dealing with shape, topography, soil condition of a hardship, and it's a variance that you're looking for, but I'm just one voice on the Board.
Right. I mean, as I stated, I wish we could proceed as a special permit again, but since the existing structure was granted by a variance, so at the end of the day, what we have and what the Board has to weigh is what is the benefit to this neighborhood by the granting of this variance? Is it getting rid of this lot?
No, but that's not the standard for the variance.
Well, generally, zoning in general, the definition of zoning, has to do with the health and welfare of the city and the neighborhood.
That's part of it.
So that is something that the Board can't look into. So yes, there is a hardship of this structure, self-imposed. I agree 100%, but it is now a hardship. If he were to sell this property to someone that didn't own a restaurant, that wouldn't be a self-imposed hardship. He just happens to be the one that still owns it.
No, but he's the successor who gets all the baggage from the previous owner.
That's correct. But I think the Board would agree that in the end, being able to create a dedicated parking area for the existing restaurant, for the existing apartment units, and the new apartment units would be a benefit to this neighborhood as a whole.
Okay. Jim, any other members, any questions? All right. Bill, do you have anything before I ask for who's in favor, who's against?
Yeah. As Dan stated, it was referenced in the minutes, too bad that the Board at that time and the Planning Director at that time didn't require that lot, B1529, which is the one across the street, be conditioned as a parking lot. And so if you did see your way to look at granting this, they did modify the application to, I've worked with him on it, to look at what was originally proposed. There was no parking lot. I said that there was a lot of, I felt there were a lot of issues with that. The fact that there are four one-bedroom units, looking at parking congestion in the neighborhood and everywhere else, if you were to do it, I would recommend that the parking lot be a specific condition. And then of that 22-space parking lot, that nine spaces, one space per each unit, a minimum of one space per each unit be reserved, and reserved and signed in that parking lot as a condition. So every single unit, the nine units, the four one-bedrooms, and then the remaining existing units would all have at least a minimum of one dedicated off-street parking space, which in the center of Fall River, as you know, is quite rare. So that's what I would recommend as a specific condition on this, if you feel that he's met the burden.
Okay. Is that it?
Yes.
All right. Is there anyone here in favor of this petition? Is there anyone here opposed to this petition? Okay. Members of the Board? Any other questions? Motion to grant? Motion to deny?
Make a motion to deny.
Motion to deny by Carolyn. Do we have a second on that motion?
Second.
Second by Jim Corkins. Any discussion on the motion? All those in favor? Jim, yes. Carolyn, yes. Assad, yes. Dan?
Yes.
Yes? David?
Yes.
Okay. So that petition is denied. The vote is five to zero.
Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Do you want to go forward with number zero or nine?
No, we're going to withdraw that. We're forcing a family home.
So, Bill, you won't, I'll do all one and you can make the request to withdraw. All right. Please. So Agenda Item 01, Horatio Maria Soars, Tuttle Street, King Philip Street, and Tripp Street, Lot B1529. This was a continuation from September 19th, 2019 meeting. It was a variance request to subdivide the existing 22,250-square-foot parcel into five lots, constructing a new single-family dwelling on four of the new lots, and leaving an off-street parking facility on the remaining lot to be utilized by property located across King Philip Street, two lots of 4,300 plus or minus square feet, two lots of 4,700 plus or minus square feet, and parking facility of 3,800 plus or minus square feet. Dan?
Good evening. Again, for the record, Dan Aguirre of Site Tech Engineering on behalf of Horatio Soars. We will request that the Board allow us to withdraw this petition without prejudice due to the fact that we do not have to now create this parking lot for the restaurant parcel and for the apartments directly across the street.
Okay. So we have a motion to, let me see if there's any, is anyone here in favor of this petition tonight? Anyone here opposed to this petition? So Jim Corkins makes a motion to allow him to withdraw without prejudice. Do we have a second?
Second.
Second, Dan Dupere. Any discussion on the motion? All those in favor? Okay. That petition is withdrawn without prejudice.
Thank you.
Number one. Now we'll start with number one. Joie de Cruz, 132 Howland Street, Lot B324. This is a variance request to increase the foundation by 140 square feet from a previously granted variance waiving requirements in R4 district, lot size 7,000 plus or minus square feet. Oh, you got it all right. Good for you. Good evening.
My name is John de Cruz. I asked the Board to increase my foundation for 140 square feet.
I remember this petition, and I think I asked you. I don't want you coming back. But you're back. What happened?
You know, when I do the foundation, I bump a little bit. I forget the stairs when I design. After that, I make a little bump, you know, to make the stairs work for the backyard. That's it.
But the plan shows other things happening.
No, that's it. The size for the neighbors, the same size, requirements, that's just to the driveway for the middle of the lot, that's why I increased, 140 feet.
And what's happening with, in the matter of Joie, this is the January 2015, two-story addition measuring 30 by 14. Is that still 30 by 14?
Yes. Whatever years I increase, 140 feet.
With the first floor, with the first floor of the addition to be a kitchen, still going to be a kitchen?
It's be a kitchen, no bedroom.
And second floor?
No second floor.
It says, "And second floor of the addition to be a one-bedroom."
Yes. When I go to the variance for the first time, yes. I eliminated the bedroom, whatever years, I just leave the kitchen. That's it.
You didn't do the second floor?
No. I don't do the second floor. I just leave the kitchen. That's it, in the first floor.
Okay. Commissioned to a kitchen addition with pre-existing. All right. Members of the Board, any questions? Bill, any suggestions? No? Is there anyone here in favor of this petition? Anyone here opposed to this petition? Motion to grant? Motion to deny? Is there any other additional? Jim Corkins, motion to grant? Do we have a second?
Second.
Second, Dan Dupere. Any discussion on the motion? All those in favor? Okay. Okay. I don't want to see you come back. We need more square footage now.
Thank you. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Agenda Item number two, Selco Partnership DBA Verizon Wireless, 502 Bedford Street, Lot M143. Special permit request to install wireless communication antennas on rooftop and place accessory radio equipment at base of building in a commercial mill district, lot size 4.4 acres. Good evening, Sue. Identify yourself for the record and tell us what you'd like to do.
Good evening. My name is Jonathan McNeil. I'm a Project Manager for Verizon Wireless. As, hopefully you have the information before you, this is proposing a new installation at 502 Bedford Street, close to the corner of Robson Street. At the top of the building, the antennas will be approximately seven feet above the height of the rooftop, but below the actual height of the building, which is about 120 feet, I think, the top height. We're proposing antennas at the 87-foot tip height line with radio equipment on the ground. And we are proposing to provide a stumping to match the stone of the building to conceal the antennas behind that fiberglass fencing. This is the Peppermill, Pepperell Mills Building. Merrill Mountain Manufacturing is, I think, the predominant user of the building right now. I guess the most important things for the Board are that we submitted an RF report indicating the need for the, for this installation and that it will be concealed behind the fencing. And for any abudders, we've submitted a RF safety report indicating that the emissions from the antennas are well below FCC guidelines for these type of installations. I'd be happy to answer any questions there.
So it'll be installed. Can you tell me a little bit about how you're planning on making them blend into the building?
Well, they're, we're going to try to match the stone of the building, the color of the building there. It's a fiberglass fencing material that'll be approximately 10 feet above, on top of the roof line, which is, again, still below some of the other parts of the building. So it's going to be a grayish color, which is typically the best to conceal, you know, it fades into the background. So I have submitted some viewshed analysis, hoping you have that. I can provide some if you need it, showing that it's really going to be minimally visible from any public way.
It's going to look like a box up on top. It will look, when it's put in, it'll look like a box.
Yeah, it'll look like a house of some sort. Yes, correct.
And the equipment at the bottom?
Yes, in a, yes, in a corner away from the street. So it's actually behind the Wendy's there. There's a little outlet there. So that'll be fenced in and then we're just running some lines up the top. Yeah, so it's, the visibility is going to be sort of minimal.
Sorry. Jim? David, any questions? Dan? Oh, Dan, Carolyn, look here. No, no, look, make sure. Bill, do you have anything you need to hear?
No. It took me a while to go through all of this paperwork to basically, to, the simulations are what I really looked, took a while to find, especially in the, you don't have the color ones set, so you get to see...
don't have the color ones set, so you get to see them. I think the fiberglass, the way they can texture it and make it look and blend in, and I know the property owner of the building is adamant about the look and feel and character of his building, Mr. Morrow, so I have no objections for this application.
Do we need to make those as conditions if we grant it?
Yes, I would make a condition that it be, that it be screened in a, that the screening be a similar compatible material that blends in with the character of the building. As they proposed.
Having heard all that, is there any other questions from the members of the board? Is there anyone here in favor of this petition? Is there anyone here opposed to this petition? Can I get a motion to grant, motion to deny? It's a special permit, so we, I guess, so under section nine, we have the authority to grant in specific districts upon the issuance of a special permit. The special permit may be issued only for uses which are in harmony with the general purpose and intent of the ordinance or bylaw. The bylaw provides for a special permit if we find that it's not detrimental to the neighborhood and that it's in conformity and harmony, so we need to have that finding if that's where we're going, and if we want to make...
Mr. Chairman, I find that they will not be more detrimental to the neighborhood.
And in harmony with the neighborhood, general purpose of the intent of the ordinance, and the condition being that they be screened.
Well, I thought that...
Yeah, okay, so let's do one, okay. So, second, any discussion on that motion? All those in favor? So that's fine. No, the special permit?
And I move that we grant special permit condition upon the structures to be built in such a manner as identified today with a fabric...
Screening, material screening to be blended with the...
Blending with the current construction.
Yeah, okay. Yeah, or some, not granted, not granted blocks.
It has to pass through, yeah, the signals have to pass through.
All right, so that's your motion. So I have a second. Second, Dan Dupere. Any discussion on the motion? All those in favor? Okay, petition's granted. Thank you. You're welcome. Agenda item number four, Rockstar Elite Enterprises, 384 Third Street, Lot I-1032. Variance request to convert the existing clubhouse function hall into two new apartment units waiving requirements in this commercial business district, lot size 3,542 plus or minus square feet.
Good evening. For the record, Dan Aguirre of SciTech Engineering, here this evening on behalf of Rockstar Elite Enterprises, who is the property owner of the real estate at 384 Third Street. You all know it as the post-314 American Legion Hall that sits on the corner of Third Street and Wade Street. This is a 3,542 square foot parcel in the central business district that normally requires 5,000 square feet. As you all know, this is a multi-story structure. There is a photograph in the package that I submitted to you, that you can get an idea of the size and scale of this structure and in relation to...
Excuse me, John, if you want to talk to Tom, go outside, huh? Thanks.
Thank you. So when we have this existing structure and the size and scale of it, you'll see the property to our north is actually an eight-family dwelling in almost the same footprint. So we have a two-story structure with a small one-story addition off to the, to one side on one of the streets. So the property owner who just purchased this, again, this was through the American Legion Clubhouse, which over the years was having a difficult time keeping up with it and weren't utilizing the building like they had used it in the past and sought out the sale of it. So Rockstar Elite Enterprises has purchased the property, and they would like to convert the existing structure into a two-family dwelling, one dwelling on each floor. As you can see, there is no ability for off-street parking. However, the reduction of the existing use being clubhouse and kitchen for the American Legion and the parking that would have been required for that, a two-unit apartment building would be a large reduction in the amount of on-street parking demand, and that would be alleviated through this, through this petition as well. So it's a rather straightforward application. We do have a pre-existing non-conforming condition. The building was not built through variance. However, due to the size of the lot and the setbacks, it's about the best that we can do is get a two-family dwelling out of that and still allow the structure to remain.
How big will each unit be? What will the dimensions be?
I can look at the building footprint, what you have in your package actually, but let me see if I can see. The total finished area now for the entire structure is 3,340 square feet. So the second floor is a little bit smaller than the first, so I, if I had to guess, I would say 1,000 square feet maybe for the second. I can't read the number on the actual footprint. Oh, I, it's on the next page. So on the second floor would be 808 and 420, and then the first floor would be much larger, of course, technically 48 by 44 on the first floor. So that would give some room for mechanicals and things of that nature, probably in one of those little side additions. So we would have to meet the minimum requirements for housing, which I believe is 750 square feet.
Is it one unit on top and one on the bottom?
That's correct. Yes, two units total.
One unit, one bedroom? Do you know?
I'm guessing they can probably get two bedrooms in each one. I don't know the specifics of that.
That wasn't proposed until I did. I don't remember seeing it, that's why I'm asking.
I'm assuming that we could live with the conditions of no more than two bedrooms per each. It is a pretty large building. And of course, oh, sorry. Can you introduce yourself first?
My name is Peter Fernandez of Rockstar Elite Enterprises. Speak up, sir. Can you hear me now? Peter Fernandez, we're down with Rockstar Elite Enterprises, and the proposal was a three-unit, a three-bedroom unit on the second floor and a four-bedroom on the first.
Four bedroom on the first and three bedroom on the second?
Mm-hmm.
And the, the second floor is only 800 square feet?
There were two sections of it. Approximately, I think about 1,000 square feet on the first, on the second.
On the second?
That's correct.
And then how much on the, the bottom floor?
I think about 1,500 to 1,600, if my math in my head is correct.
Based on this, it looks like second floor is 808 and 420, so that's about 12, a little over 1,200.
Yeah.
And then, so you have 1,200 plus another, the FFL, which is the first floor, would be the 808, the 400, and 884. So you're looking at 2,000, so a little bigger than 2,000 on the first floor and about 1,200 on the second floor, based on...
Based on the assessors.
Based on the assessor card. Obviously, that's not surveyed accurate.
Six.
See, they're asking, you haven't told me how many units you want for each, so I'm going to tell you as you want. If you can, with two and two, then you can add on your question.
Four, six. Yeah, I think that's kind of pushing it. Okay.
Would it be feasible to do a two-bedroom on the second and a three on the first?
It's feasible to do lots of things. Let's see what the board has to say. So, any, David, questions? Dan? Carolyn?
Can you just address the hardship, please?
Well, the hardship is this, the unique existing structure that sits on this lot that was not created through variance. So we have a property that has this very large structure on it that has been sold. It is in the central business district, so we do have to comfort you for relief.
Because central business district doesn't allow single-family, two-family, three-family, multifamily. It does, it does allow for multifamily dwellings of 20 and more units.
That's correct.
So you've got this older building that was used as a, I would call it a clubhouse. You want to convert it, I should probably ask Mr. Roth what, if any, comments he has to help guide us through it.
If you look at the surrounding area, we're surrounded by residential dwellings of twos, threes, four-unit condominiums.
No, no, we see, we see, I know, well, I shouldn't say that. We see it, I see it. Maybe the board sees it also. But that's what it's been used for, for the past, and I'm trying to think, it's been there for a while.
It was built in 13, I believe? Yes, 1913.
So, Bill, do you have any comments for us?
Well, I think it's not in the application, but it's discussed here as the original proposal was for a four-unit and a three-unit, which is for parking-wise and is, even though it's a large structure, is quite a lot, and then I know it was discussed two and two, and then the owners here said that, you know, you want to, it would be a very large three-bedroom and a very large two-bedroom. I think that if you decide to grant it, I would restrict the number of bedrooms, and I would not go above the three and the two. I think four and a four-unit and a three-unit is, is quite a lot for extra parking requirements, and as you know, that's usually the biggest issue. I think that...
You're not providing any off-street parking.
No, there is no room. That's why I explained.
No.
We're actually creating a reduction in parking demand because of the changing use.
Yeah, and that...
So the parking is going to be on, on street?
On street, as it is now for the car.
As it is now for the bus, well, for the bar. I mean, American Legion's clubhouse on a bar. So, so I would restrict it to the, a maximum of a three, three-unit, three-unit and a two-unit, if you decide to grant it.
That's, that's one of my concerns with the number of units and the cars coming there, because it's already a congested area. Okay. Carolyn, anything else?
I know.
No? And that's your, is there anyone here in favor of this petition? Is there anyone here opposed to this petition? Okay. Motion to grant, motion to deny? Get that, no?
I'll move to grant based on limiting the number of bedrooms on the first floor to three and to, on the second floor to two.
First floor, three bedrooms, second floor, two bedrooms. Okay, motion to grant to the conversion, first floor, three bedrooms, second floor, two bedrooms. Anything else? That's it? Okay. Okay, so we have a motion. Do we have a second?
Second.
Second, David Saber, any discussion on the motion? Dan? Carolyn? No? All those in favor? Yes. Yes, Carolyn?
No.
David Asser, no. Three to two. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. I see that was enough. Three to two.
I still have others.
We, number five, we...
Which one?
Is that the next one? ASE Investments?
ASE, yes.
Okay.
Do you want to read it?
I'll read, yeah, let's, let me read it, and then we'll figure out what we're going to do. ASE Investments LLC, 69 R Alden Street, Lot J-279. Variance and special permit request to construct a three-story, 32-unit apartment building with commercial space on a portion of the first floor, providing 72 parking spaces waiving requirements in the commercial mill district, CMD, lot size 68,000 plus or minus square feet, with no frontage on an accepted city street. All right, good evening.
Good evening. Again, for the record, Dan Aguirre here this evening on behalf of ASE Investments LLC. As you may or may not know, ASE Investments LLC, one of the members of the LLC is David Saber, who cannot act on this, this petition, which leaves us with a four-member board, with member Frank being absent. So we will request that the board allow us to carry it over until December for now, in the hopes that we can get a five-member board where four votes are needed in favor.
Okay, has anybody come out this evening in favor of this petition or opposed to this petition? Okay, can I get a motion to...
Motion to grant continuing.
To December. The December meeting is December...
21st?
Twenty, December 19th. December 19th.
Bar of December 19th meeting.
Okay, that's the motion. Do we have a second?
Second.
Second, all those in favor? All right. ASE Investment LLC petition will be heard in December, and we'll try to provide a five-member board.
Thank you, Brian.
Thank you. Agenda item number six. Tanya Marciala, Marin Cabrera, 334 Tuttle Street, Lot B-187. Variance request to convert the existing single-family dwelling previously used as a community house into a three-family dwelling waiving requirements in the commercial mill district, lot size 5,024 plus or minus square feet.
Good evening. Again, for the record, Dan Aguirre of SciTech Engineering, here this evening on behalf of Tanya Marciala, Marin Cabrera, who is the new property owner of the real estate located at 334 Tuttle Street, is located in a commercial mill district, as the chairman has stated. Probably one of the more interesting pieces of property that I've ever worked on in the city, to be honest with you. This structure is what was originally called the King Philip Settlement House. I'm not sure if any of you are familiar with that at all, but it was the King Philip Community House after that. But what it started off as, and I just wanted you guys to see just what it was and what the use was back in the day, if you want to pass that around. What it was, was a settlement house, which at the time was in support of the mills, the Kilburn Mill area, and all of the people that lived in the different row houses in that area. So we've got approximately 3,500 square foot structure. That's a historic photo. There's also another photo of how the house sits now. So it served the purpose as, as that settlement house for a number of years, and then, this was dating back to 1913, then the property was acquired by Family Services and was utilized as what was called the King Philip Community House, was a daycare center and, and service department for, for family services. And I believe 14, the property was purchased and a variance was requested to allow the use to be utilized as a single-family home, which is not an allowed use in a commercial mill district. So it needed a variance to be allowed to be used for a single-family dwelling. So again, we've got a 3,500 square foot structure on a 5,000 square foot lot, surrounded by multifamily dwellings. We had a first floor of 1,806 square feet and a second floor of approximately 1,092 square feet, again, by the assessors' records. The new owner, when you look at this home, you would expect that it would be, if you look at the, the updated photo that's in your, in your application, which is this one, looks like a multifamily dwelling. There's actually an attic area as well that, that's currently not finished. So they went to the building inspector with the intent of trying to create or convert this very, very large, single-family home into a three-unit apartment building. The building inspector instructed him that they did not have the land area, which you all know, and that's what brings us to you this evening. So the petition is to allow them to create a three-unit apartment building out of what is now a single-family dwelling by variance. So they're basically asking for that initial variance to be abandoned and allow them to go back to a multifamily use, which historically is basically what this building has been. We have a very old historic structure that sits on this property, not created by variance. I've given you some documentation of what the property use was for a number, number of years, and it's just basically a very large building that does not serve a purpose for a single-family home. I believe there are two half-baths and one full bath in this structure, and in this entire house, currently, right now, there's only two bedrooms. So they've, I don't even think they're on every floor, to be honest with you.
I'm trying to think of the history, because I remember, God rest his soul, Gene Als and I were out there when, back in...
Stephanie Corey actually wrote a book, and I was able to find this online. That's a little bit more of the history when it goes back.
No, but, but, one of, one of my recollections, and I don't, and I don't remember this clearly, that the condition was that it remained a single-family dwelling, but there was the request for, there was some commercial use on the building at the time.
The 2,000, well, there was a commercial use, yes, there was a daycare center and family services, that's what it, the name of it was, King Philip, so there was a commercial...
But it wasn't just, my recollection was, it wasn't just the daycare center, there was something else commercial going on in the building.
The variance decision, and I tried to get additional information from the assessors' office, the 2014 decision.
That, that's what I'm looking at, that's what's, that's my recollection of it.
And it basically just says, in the matter of Family Services, for a variance request to convert the existing commercial building, which was the daycare and the family service here... which was the daycare and the family service use, into a single-family dwelling, waiving use of dimensional requirement. So again, that was due to single-family homes just not allowed in the...
I got it, I'm just asking the question, because we left it as a single, as a condition, and I can't remember why, and I thought maybe...
I couldn't find anything additional.
But I remember Gene, that day we were out there, 'cause the cement place is down the street.
Yeah, directly adjacent to the cement place, so this is on, it borders a street, LaRouche Street, which is actually only a twenty-two foot wide way, and, and they do have some parking that runs parallel to the side of the building, and no one uses that street. So the multifamily use is actually an allowed use in this district, Commercial Mill District. By special permit, however, since, again, the last use was a variance, we now need to come back to you again for a new variance. But at least the use would now be in keeping with the surrounding neighborhood.
There's no, there's no other, no other activity taking place? It'll be used as a three-family dwelling.
As a three-family, and it is owner occupied. Well, it's, it's off-street in a manner, if you go down LaRouche Street, the, there's a fence that runs along LaRouche, which is set back. Well, now it's, it's a patio area behind the fence, it's no longer a playground, but there is about a nine-foot swath from the fence to the actual way. Again, it's a very narrow way, and it was just a layout done in two thousand and eight. So they do have the ability, it, it's technically, it looks like it's on-street parking, but it's actually on the land, correct? So there are no curb cuts, it's just a paved surface, it goes in.
Jogs in, yes.
The property has no historic registration or...
Um, it, it, it does, it has, I mean, the, the, the structure was dated back to nineteen thirteen, so it most likely does. And anything that needs to come, we're not demolishing the building.
Yeah.
If we were taking the building down, then of course there's a, there's a method to go through.
Any limitations is what they can do with the exterior anyway.
Well, the exterior is entirely different than, than the photo that I, I just showed you, the historic photo.
How big is each unit going to be?
That, that I don't know, but you can limit the two, the, the existing unit would stay as it is, and I would say that the two new units, 'cause we have a two-bedroom now, would be no more than two each.
So is it gonna be two on the first floor?
I'm not gonna let, I'm not gonna let an owner come down now and, and say something other than that.
But is it, it'll be two units on the first floor, one on the second, and how is, how are you...
Well, I, I'm assuming it's gonna be first floor, second floor, another unit, and then the attic area, another unit.
Two, two, two.
Correct, no more than two, two, two. The attic, maybe they can only get a one, but this is a pretty big footprint. Currently thirty-five hundred square feet finished, and that doesn't count the attic space, so it's a pretty big structure.
I guess I just, my concern is, you know, we just granted a variance five years ago, and now we're back in here again for a different variance.
That's correct, because it's a different landowner.
Well, but it's a recent landowner, so they should've known what the conditions were prior to purchase.
I've met with, with these clients, and I can tell you that, no, they, they, they should not have known better, and, and they do not know better. There's no excuse, but I, I can tell you that they did not or would not. We had to get an interpreter actually to, to put this application together.
Yeah, no, I'm just, I go back to the variance of two thousand and fourteen, number two, the dwelling shall remain a single-family. And I just, I'm racking my, Jim was on the board too, and we voted that, and I'm just trying to figure out what it was that we were thinking at the time to say that a single-family, because the other multifamilies in the neighborhood existed at the time.
Yeah, this is Howard Blash.
Yeah, no, I, 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 I'm just trying to remember what, I, I guess that's what happened.
To be honest with you, the single-family request, although, when you, if you look at density and things of that nature, the single-family request flies more in the face of the zoning district than, than this request. But at the time, so I remember the property was purchased by Tony Almeida, I think you all know Antonio Almeida. And at the time, it was okay with it being a single-family.
Now, let me, Bill, did we hear from you yet? All right, let's hear from you. While you're doing that, I'll be thinking about what we did.
I, I really don't have too many issues with it, it, as it's, they said, you know, it's... The single-family use was more in the face of the variance than the multifamily use with this. And I think that if you limit it to two, two, a maximum of two, two and two, I don't see an issue with that.
Okay. Fourteen, when did we adopt this? I'm trying to think if this was... Yeah, we did this, we, we did it two thousand and thirteen, so fourteen, we had the new regs, 'cause I'm trying to think, was there something under the old ordinance? But this was two thousand and fourteen, so we had these new regulations.
Yeah, it was always the Commercial Mill, it wasn't the Industrial, so I'm...
Yeah, no, no, I'm, I'm just trying to think whether these were in place.
Yeah, initially that would've been considered, I believe, in the Industrial District.
But the, you know, your statement, and, and again, I'm rethinking it, but the Commercial Mill District does allow for the multifamily as...
Is there off-street parking?
Uh, as I stated before, there, there is off-street parking, when you go down, it, LaRouche Street is so narrow, it's only twenty-two feet wide. So directly adjacent to the traveled way of LaRouche, there is, the building and the fence are set back enough where they currently can fit three or four vehicles running parallel, so it looks like on-street parking, but it's actually technically on this property. There is not, I wish there was the ability to build into the lot, but there, there really isn't due to some elevated patios and things that, improvements that Mr. Almeida made, where he had it as a single-family.
Is there anyone here in favor of this petition? Is there anyone here opposed to this petition? I don't know, it's kinda funny, huh, what five years does, I'm thinking about, this is more in conformity with, with, but, the size.
I think the application was probably placed, 'cause that's the way it was requested.
Yeah, I, I don't, yeah, I'm just trying to fit, but that language is just so, it's just shall remain.
So definite, yeah. But that was our habit of emphasizing what was put in the petition.
And again, this is a property where, under the Commercial Mill District, I guess they could use some of the additional space for the commercial purposes that are listed in the Commercial Mill District in the bylaw. However, this area is surrounded by multifamilies, the closest commercial stuff is over on Kilburn, which is still a few blocks away.
Yeah, no, Tom, yeah, Tom.
Other than, other than the concrete replant across the...
And everything around this thing is multifamily, so, I don't, I don't remember, and I apologize for not remembering. But the single-family variance exists, as Carolyn says, that's what we granted. Well, what do we want to do, motion to grant, motion to deny, let it stay a single-family, and that's where they are.
I see no harm in approving the petition based upon the recommendation of the limitation of the number of bedrooms on, on each floor to two.
Two, two and two, okay. So we have a motion to grant by Jim Corkins, two limitation, two, two and two, maximum, okay? Do we have a second?
A second.
Second, Dan Dupere. Any discussion on the motion? All those in favor? Two, three, four, five. Okay, so that, this one is granted, that it would be, the petition is granted, condition being not greater than two bedrooms on each floor.
Thank you very much.
And, oh wait, can we modify it that the previous variance, I mean, not that we really need to do it, we should be withdrawn for the one that granted it, so we...
Oh, we need this then?
Well, not really, but... Well, 'cause now you've got two, you've got different variances in the chain of titles, so if we say this one's... We don't need to do it, it's fine, single-family, if they wanna go back, they can. Very. Number seven, Frederick Humes, Junior and Faith Lattessa care of John R. Mitchell Esquire, thirty-six seventy-one North Main Street, Lot X five thirty-five. Special permit request to convert Flower Garden Center Retail Nursery into dispatching transportation business with related uses of non-public auto repair and auto sales for onsite business purposes, waiving requirements to the S Single Family District, lot size seventeen thousand three hundred and eighty plus or minus square feet. Good evening.
Good evening, Chairman, members of the board. I'm here, with me is Faith Lattessa, Fred Humes. They're the petitioners, they have a property under contract, subject to certain approvals, and this is one of them. They operate Town Transportation, it used to be, years ago, Yellow Cab, it's now known as Town Transportation. Mr. Olowski, the current owner of the property, and his wife are there. You would know it as Hillside Nursery in the north end. Mr. Olowski's decided to get out of the business and has listed the property, and my clients are interested in operating. Mr. Humes has operated the business for almost thirty years now in Fall River. Goes back in the taxi business over fifty years in Providence and Fall River. He's operated for years on Stevens Street, up at the old Capri Mill in the back. It's a Stevens Street address, but it's not in Stevens Street. He's had homes there for years, they built, there were homes there when he moved in, the neighbors approved it at the time, and they built more homes while he was there, and he's had a good relationship with his neighbors. He hasn't had complaints, no problems over the years. Looking to move, the Capewannos, who many of you, I think, knew, ran Capri, sold the building a few years ago, and he would just prefer to move at this point, and his lease is coming up. The property, the proposal is pretty much to take it over as it is. Met with the building inspector, and he believed it, and I agreed with him, that would need a special permit. We don't think it's certainly detrimental to the area, we think it's a less imposing harm, even though the nursery business was seasonal. In this case, and I think what's important to note is, and the reason we put it as a rapid dispatching business, is the whole field of, you know, transportation has changed so much. You've got Uber and Lyft competing with Town Transportation now. So the large body of their work now is all pre-arranged, it's a lot with the school system, a lot with medical, taking people on mass health or just workman's comp, other things, to medical appointments, that's a large part. They still have vehicles that, you know, pick up fares and bring people here and there, but most of that is done off-site. It's no longer, and I know I've, I've been the Fred in Faith's business many times, people aren't congregating there during the day. Most of the, well, people who work for him lease the cabs or own them themselves, and they take them home or park them elsewhere. So it's not gonna be a noisy, it's not gonna be a clubhouse, none of that. Most of the people show up in the morning for school runs, come back in the afternoon, and then they're dispatched. There's no longer antennas, those used to be a problem with transportation business, everything's done electronically. There's still dispatching, and there will be someone there twenty-four hours to take calls. But as far as the actual work itself, it's mostly during the daytime, you have very few night people on anymore, correct? Yeah, there's just not much business at night, and, and most of it's going to the online Lyft and Uber. They do carry with them a Class Two used car license, but the purpose of that is not to sell to the public. They've never sold to the public. It lets them go to the auction and buy vehicles and replace them more cheaply and more efficiently. So they've had that, I think, the whole time you've been in business, correct? And we're, depending what happens tonight, we're scheduled to go before the licensing board on Monday to get an annex license or not. But that's the purpose of that, and then they also do repairs there, the city has never required a license for that, again, because they don't do repairs for the public, they just do their own vehicle repairs and take care of it that way. And that's the reason we noticed it in there. So we do believe it's a use in harmony with the neighborhood. It's a little different than the nursery in the sense, and the reason the building inspector suggested a special permit is, the general public's not gonna go there, it's not a retail operation, people don't come in and out. It's them going to the general public largely, and most of that doesn't take place there, most of it's through the dispatching. Drivers who are out on the road at their homes somewhere in the city or this general area. They employ, although technically they don't employ, most of them are independent contractors, but they have any time, eighteen to twenty people working for them, maybe a few more. There were four people who were there regularly, dispatcher, Mr. Humes, Ms. Lattessa, and then there's one other mechanic who shows up regularly. Other than that, it's the drivers according to their assignment, and a lot of them, it's according to their whim, how many hours they wanna put in, how much they wanna work. So we are asking this be approved, the plan shows more than suitable parking, it's a good location for it. As to the one objective, and I believe the son is here, I did speak with Mr. Blackburn, and then the three of us spoke with him on Tuesday, and we did talk to him about his concerns. We did, you know, emphasize that as far as lighting after dark, there's not really gonna be people there, there will be someone in the building. So there will be lights, you know, a light in the building for whoever's dispatching, but it's not gonna be fully lit. There'll be some lights, because you're gonna have a lot of vehicles there, and there's concern for safety, vehicles parked there. But we don't plan any intrusive lighting. The hours of operation, as we said, it's largely daytime for the transportation, but there will be someone in the building at all hours because of the dispatching. His big concern, when I spoke with them, was about the repair and sale of vehicles. We're not gonna have any cars on the lot, there's not gonna be salesmen there. Again, the purpose for the Class Two license is strictly to access to the auction, to buy vehicles. And the repairs are done pretty much during the day, and Mr. Humes does them himself with Mr. Fades, who's back there. And they're both of an age where I don't think they do repairs after seven or eight o'clock at night, they're, they're home by then. So I do think, we talked about other things, Mr. Blackburn, I know, was concerned, is there gonna be signs and that type of thing? We don't plan any signs, I mean, you have to have one by law, so there'll just be a small sign probably on the building. If you go by now, there's kind of a panel sign out front, we're not planning a sign like that. There won't be any illuminated LED signs or anything like that, basically just a small sign on the door indicating Faith Auto, which is the name of the Class Two Used Cars Sales Permit, and then Town Transportation. And there's no extensive lighting, so we do believe we, like I said, we talked at length with Mr. Blackburn, I don't know if there's further objections, we're certainly here to respond to them. But that's the use we proposed, we do think it's in harmony with the neighborhood, there's other commercial business uses.
Am I missing something? My rec, my research tells me this is in an S Single Family District.
It is.
Yeah, and I just want, because the way it's, yeah, it's a single-family residential neighborhood. That's what it's zoned.
But there's hardly any single families there.
But that's what the zone is.
Yeah, no, that's what it is, across the street is a condo with about thirty units.
The Blackburn house.
Mr. Blackburn has three units there as a townhouses. There's a few, I think, three single families on, is it Milage Street?
Yeah.
That runs along it, but almost everything along there is apartment buildings, there's commercial uses. There's a auto repair on the corner, there's a land lawn mower business.
Yeah, maybe the planning board should be, to rezonate or something, but, I mean, we are kinda stuck in the S District.
We are, but we do think it conforms, again, in terms of a special permit, we don't think it's detrimental to the neighborhood.
That such change or extension shall not be substantially more detrimental than the existing non-conforming use to the neighborhood's gonna be the standard, so...
Correct.
We'll see, okay, thank you, John.
Any structural change on the buildings that are there?
The only thing is...
And was there interior garage space in that existing structure?
There's a garage off the street.
Around back and in?
Yes.
I mean, yeah.
How many cars?
I just miss the parts that...
How many cars will be on the lot?
Approximately twenty.
It varies, there's more this time of year with school, they, they take them out, yeah.
In the, in the summer, there's less vehicles, because we don't have that much work in the summertime. summertime.
Well, are the unregistered vehicles on?
No.
None.
Actually, Town Transportation, if you talk to Ms. Bousha, the city clerk, they're regularly putting cars on, taking them off. They don't leave them unregistered. If they don't need them, they don't use them. So, they're actually probably paid far in excess of what they should for licensing and relicensing of their vehicles. But during the school year, it's pretty consistent, correct?
Anything else, Jim? David? Dan?
Yeah, my only concern is repairs, like you're saying, after eight o'clock at night.
No, no, I was joking, that they don't stay up that late. I don't say how old they are, but the two mechanics don't stay up that late.
I'm going, seventy-one years old, I must say.
Take it easy a little, not late.
Right, right, so that's, it's definitely done during the day, and then you're going to have compressors running at night.
No, there's none of that. We're not, they don't do it now, they're not going to do it there.
I just, the lighting would be in the back lot to?
In the back, and not that big sign, it's a huge sign out there.
Yeah. No, I'm just looking at, you mentioned lighting for the security of the vehicles that are left there overnight.
Yeah, the vehicles are in the back, actually close, Mr. Olowski's property than anyone's. There's a big, it's all fenced in and pretty secure, so that's where the proposal by the engineer puts the parking.
Okay, Carolyn, anything?
No, my only concern is down the road, if somebody else owns it, they could do auto repairs then if we allow this. So, how can we structure it so, you know, it's not in the middle of the night, people are doing auto repairs, or it's not coming and going? We have to think of what's going to be going on if they no longer own the place.
Time on the lot.
We're agreeable to that, right? Time on it?
Yeah. Well, we can deal with, we can put some conditions on.
Could we put on a patient to own vehicles?
Owned?
Yeah, vehicles that they own themselves.
Well, the three component pieces of the special permit that's being asked is, one, the dispatch. So, if the dispatching was taking place in the house by itself without any other activity, then you say, okay, I can see. But now, when you've got the vehicles coming in, going out, so you've got this additional activity twenty-four-seven, seven days a week versus seasonal, which was there. Now, I also have, and I realize that Attorney Mitchell is saying that, no, they don't sell, but they will have that license, and it doesn't, I don't know how you can say, you'll have the Class II license, but you're not going to have any cars on it. So, that's what they're looking for, this board, to give them permission to maintain that license and have the sale. So, you've got this big activity taking place.
Well, it's not the, it's the repair that she was referring to.
Well, the repair is also, it's just like, that's how it works.
Yeah, I mean, it restricts the repair to owned vehicles, or company-owned vehicles.
Yeah, but company-owned, twenty vehicles.
It does that, that would solve if somebody else moved in, they would not be able to own.
Yeah, that could be, that would be, that would be a condition. Your own vehicles, that's correct. And you can put a limit on it if it's twenty vehicles or twenty-five vehicles, but that's how, that's how I think, if you see your way to the special permit, then that's how I think it would be structured with some type of condition, if you can get there.
But I was about to ask you.
Yeah.
I was on the, yes.
Again, but let's see. So, any other questions? Bill, anything you want to add?
Yeah, the layout actually frustrates me, because the way the engineer laid it out, he laid it out with twenty-four-foot drive aisles. That's like, that's like a commercial development. I wish he would have come in and talked to me before he laid it out, because he's laying it out, basically putting parking all the way up against the single-family residences to the, to the east and south, and you don't, it's, the public doesn't access this. So, you can, the layout, I would recommend, I would love to see the layout changed to take the use and pull it away from the residences, and that can be done pretty easily. You have spaces five through nine where you have a twenty-four-foot drive, five through ten. You only need about a fifteen to sixteen-foot drive aisle, because you control your vehicles. The public doesn't do it. And then, where spaces eleven, twelve, thirteen, fourteen, you can, and then all the twenty-seven through, you move those and you double-stack them, and then you, then you can provide screening, landscaping, and fencing along that western property line, and pull the use away from the residences, and it can be done pretty easily.
So, what would you recommend for the, the space between the, what are you saying, fifteen feet?
Well, I think it should be, I think, we're not to design a plan tonight, that's my problem. I think that, I think that, you know, you only need, you know, maybe fifteen to eighteen feet, because you control, it's private, so the public.
Yeah, there's not going to be people like a parking lot or anything.
And you can double-stack, so you've taken everything and you spread it out like it's, like it's a stop and drop, and you don't need to. You can take all those cars and you can move everything to the east, and really provide some buffer and screening along that back, away from the residences, and provide, you know, an area that you're not going to. The only other thing that, from a site plan review standpoint that I have concern with is exterior lighting, and you do want to light the back here, and we don't know, I don't know, are they, are they eight-foot poles, sixteen-foot poles, twelve-foot poles, LED lights, halogen lights, metal halide? I mean, because that is, you're going to put light in the backyards of two residences, three residences, and it's needing to see kind of, what kind of lighting you're going to use. If you do do it, I recommend site plan review, but I think a revised plan needs to be submitted that, I'm not necessarily opposed to this, but a revised plan that, that takes all this excess area and really takes your use and moves it to the east away from the residences, because if this is the amount you need, you can, you can move everything, you can, you know, depending on how your business is, you can double-stack cars, because you can move them. So, five through ten, you could put two more there, put a fifteen-foot aisle, and then put the rest of the cars. Do you see what I'm saying?
Yeah.
And then you move it, and then you move it away, and you move it away from the, the house at three, thirty-six, seventy-three, you know. You basically move that, your business, a good fifteen, twenty feet, and maybe provide, you know, planting of some pine trees that are evergreens, that aren't expensive, that sort of, these are, this is the thing I would recommend. I'd love to sit down with the engineer and say, let's do this.
Actually, Mr. Olowski's here, he's the one who'd be affected.
I'm living at thirty-six, seventy-three, sir, when you're talking. So, it would be no problem whatsoever.
So long as you're there, sir.
I'm not worried about you, I'm worried about the person that, I'm worried about the person that buys it.
I'll be there until probably I'm dead.
I'm worried about the person that.
Very zen of you, sir.
Yeah. I have to look about the person that buys it and then comes into my office and complains about the lighting and this.
Okay, we've got, we've got the building, we've got the director of planning's input. Okay, we know what he's looking for.
That's what I would recommend, a revised plan that moves everything over.
I got it.
And provides a little more detail and a little more information.
Okay, thank you. Is there anyone here in favor of this? Carolyn, anything else?
No.
Anyone here in favor of this petition? Anyone here opposed to this petition? Mr. Blackburn, tell us what your opposition is, please.
Jim Blackburn, my parents own the house on the corner of Millard Street. They couldn't be here to represent themselves, so I'm here to find that.
You're fine.
The, I don't think my parents necessarily have any concern with the proposed use and how it's been described to them. I think generally they're okay with that. I do have some concerns, though, as far as, and mainly around the idea that, once the special permit would be granted, somebody else could purchase the property and then use it as it was not necessarily intended during this meeting. And so, some of the things were repairs of automotive and then the sale. And so, I think, while not specifically concerned with proposals, we would request that the board place some special conditions or some conditions on the use of the property for future, and potentially even limit it to the specific owner.
Okay, so let me tell you, the board can't limit it to the specific owner, so we can't do it.
Is that true for special permits or just variances?
For both.
Believe it is case law.
Can't do it for the owner. We can talk about the conditions being that will run with the land, that will be part of it, so the expansion is something that you mentioned at the outset was something other than what we granted. If they do something greater than what we give them permission to do, that would be a violation. But they could, in fact, sell it to someone else that's doing the exact same business. If there's any deviation or variance from that, that will require someone to come back before the board to request a change in the conditions of that special permit.
Okay, so, as a suggestion, I had produced a number of special conditions that we would propose. I can either read them to the record or provide them to the board with consideration.
Read them and give them to the board.
So, the first item was lighting on the building should be directed downward and not upward, or not outward, suggesting no full moon, allowing lighting to be allowed, and preferably not kind of the brighter.
Do you only have one copy?
I do.
Okay, so you read it, then we'll.
All right, no parking to be allowed out on the street. I don't know if that necessarily is a big sticky point for us. Site activities to remain screened from view of adjacent properties as best as possible, so I think you actually spoke to that specifically to the north and the south, the butters. No's odor impact should be no different than the existing operation. Business hours, so business hours today, as they proposed, I recognize a twenty-four-seven operation, and that makes sense, however, for future owners, we propose that they be limited to seven to five P.M., Monday through Saturday, and then on Sundays, no hours. However, business limited to indoor office activity, take place twenty-four-seven. Adequate access to the building to be maintained, this is the state fire code. Already, there's going to be variants granted that allows the garage area of that property to be right up on the existing property line with my parents' property. I guess the concern there would be vehicles being parked up against the building and say first responders access if there was a fire or something. No fueling of motor vehicle vehicles permitted on site, no commercial sale of motor vehicles permitted on site, no repair of motor vehicles or equipment not owned by the business permitted on site.
Hey, why don't you, give me the, give me your, we'll make that part of the record.
Again, this is with the intent that, we recognize that the proposed business plans presented today is not necessarily the current, it might be for a future owner.
Okay.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Everybody wants to see those. Thank you. Anyone else opposed to this petition? So, I guess the petition is being brought under eighty-six, four-twenty-four, non-conforming use of the land. I didn't, I didn't know, I didn't find a variance. There was a variance that granted the use of the current business there?
From what I understand, Mr. Olowski, was it the current business, or was it a garage that was added on, I think?
It's always been a nursery and a garage since the last forty years.
I think the variance had to do, there's a garage, as you face it on your right, on the south side. That's the one that's close to your property, right?
That's right.
Yeah, and it looks like a later addition, but my understanding is, you know, it's a pre-existing use.
So, getting the non-conforming use of the land under eighty-six, four-twenty-four, the Board of Appeals may grant a special permit to change or extend a non-conforming use in accordance with the section, only if it determines that such change or extension shall not be substantially more detrimental than the existing non-conforming use to the neighborhood. So, that's the standard that we have to go on if we want to either grant, or if they meet the standard, then we can go forward. If they say no, then it's over. So, listening to what's being proposed and what's there now, to somebody, do we think they've met the burden? Can we go forward, or motion to grant, motion to deny?
If we make it subject to the review, will that cover?
What review? Site plan?
Yeah.
I think you've got to go to the basic underlying use before we get to the site plan. We could, if you say that.
And can it be a multiple, I mean, a two-part granting then, or do we have to do all of our motions?
You have to do the first part.
You've got to do the first, let's do the first part.
That will find out, okay, yeah. I do find that will not be more detrimental to the.
You find that this, the proposed use would not be more detrimental to the neighborhood than the existing non-conforming use? Okay, so that's Jim's motion for that finding. Do we have a second on that motion?
Second.
Second, Dan Dupire? Second, Dan Dupire. All those in favor of that motion? Three? Carolyn?
No.
Sad, no. So, the special permit, that takes care of that, so that doesn't, doesn't go forward. The second law is it met, the petition's denied. Agenda item number eight, Arsenio Souza, two-eighty-six, two-ninety Peckham Street, one-ninety Cook Street, lot F twenty-eight, eighty-five, eighty-eight, and eighty-nine. A finding of a special permit granted with conditions March fifteenth, two thousand and eighteen, to subdivide the existing parcel into three lots, leaving an existing multifamily dwelling on each lot, that all but one of the conditions of the grant was satisfactorily complied with, and that affidavit of separation of utilities be recorded at this time.
Good evening. Again, for the record, Dan Aguiar of Site Tech Engineering, here this evening on behalf of Arsenio Souza, as the chairman stated. As he had read in, this petition had gone through the special permit process of subdividing this multi, three multifamily dwellings on a lot. There was a number of conditions, one of them being that an affidavit of service be recorded prior to the conveyance that all the utilities had been separated. The variance was recorded, the subdivision plan was recorded, the utilities were separated. However, the affidavit, the realtor that was handling it at the time, the affidavit was never recorded prior to the conveyance of one of the homes. So, all of the work was done, it was just the one-page document had not been recorded. So, what we're here this evening requesting is that the board make a finding.
That there was substantial compliance with the variance and that the affidavit not be recorded.
We're not going to get any longer than that. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Because the file documents that the, all the conditions were met, the utilities were, in fact, separated, and the only, the only item that was missing was the failure to record the affidavit at the registry of deeds.
And it wasn't picked up by the first closing attorney when the first conveyance went out. It's now that they were selling the other, one of the other parcels, that that attorney brought to the owner's attention.
Okay, so.
That's all.
Any questions, members of the board? Bill, do you have any comments? This should be a brute. Is there anyone here in favor of this petition? Is there anyone here opposed to this petition? Okay. Can we have a finding that there was substantial compliance with the variance and that the owner filed the affidavit at the registry of deeds that utilities, in fact, have been separated in compliance with condition number one of the March fifteenth, two thousand and eighteen variance? Jim, do we have a second?
Second.
Second, Dan Dupire? Any discussion on the motion? All those in favor? Okay, so that's done. Thank you.
Great, thank you.
Agenda item number nine, Anna and Daniel Cabral, sixty-seven Narragansett Street, lot S ten nineteen, variance request to allow an in-law unit above a freestanding garage, waiving requirements in the Commercial Mill District, lot size eight thousand one hundred and ninety plus or minus square feet.
Good evening. Again, for the record, Dan Aguiar of Site Tech Engineering. Before we move too far into this application, I would like to note that the plan calls out number sixty-seven as being an existing two-family dwelling.
Yes.
It is not. It is an existing single family, so I apologize for that error. So, if you want to make that change on your plans. So, we are in a Commercial Mill District that contains a parcel of land of eight thousand one hundred and ninety-eight.
Excuse me?
Square feet, which is less than the required, ten thousand square feet for the area, and we have an existing single-family home on this parcel, and a very large existing garage to the rear of it. You can see that we are in an area comprised of multifamily dwellings, and again, this is a non-conforming use. I did not fill out the application. This was done by the. I did not fill out the application, this was done by the property owner, and then subsequently, after the application was filed, he asked, well, there was a plan submitted that the board, that the department found to be insufficient, so they asked, Mr. Cabral asked me to put together this revised plan. If I had moved this petition forward on my own from the get-go, I would have moved in the direction of a special permit where we do have an existing nonconforming use of a single-family dwelling in a district that does not allow single-family dwellings in the commercial mill district. I would normally request that the board allow us to move in the direction of a special permit, but if they see that that is not fit, then we'll proceed with the variance proceeding and the requests for variance. So if I could, if you, Mr. Chairman, if you would entertain the idea of moving this project forward as a special permit first, I would-
I don't think I can.
No, okay. Well, I know sometimes we've moved forward on the lesser requests.
You know, I-
We can always come back.
No, no, listen, I love the argument, so I've got to tell you, yes, I like that, but I think the under 48, under the-
Understood.
Notice, notice parts of it, I don't think the board has the authority to say, let's drop it down.
Okay, again-
Because I'm, as I read it, that's exactly what I was thinking. Why, why is it being brought in?
And literally, I-
Why don't you resubmit and renotice?
Well, he's already paid the fee. We'll move forward as a variance, and I'll, and I'll give you the argument for, for a variance, and he still has the ability to move forward as a special permit if the variance does not go through. So similarly then to the last petition that was granted on Tuttle Street with the single-family home in the existing commercial mill district, we now have an existing single-family structure in a district that doesn't allow a single-family structure, so it's a nonconforming use. He does have this garage area in the back that in his-
Now, you know what we did on Tuttle Street, isn't precedent setting for this?
No, I understand that. I'm just saying that it's, you don't often-
I just want to make sure that the camera knows it, I know.
You don't often see this many similar cases in one event. So in the petition, Mr. Cabral states that he would like to convert the freestanding garage to a single-family dwelling unit for in-law purposes in a commercial mill district. So we would be taking a, an existing structure, we would increasing, we would be increasing the amount of off-street parking to accommodate that structure, and the variance could be done in a manner where it is required that it's an in-law kind of a setup. This would now bring us closer to uses that are allowed by special permit in a commercial mill district, being the multi, or a two-family unit, or two dwelling units on one lot. So we would actually be getting rid of a nonconforming use condition, which is the single family, and we would be, for use, we would be complying, we would just now not be meeting the area requirement for such a use, but that's already a nonconformity. We don't meet the area requirement now because we're less than the 10,000 square feet. So I would ask that we have this unique condition where we have a nonconforming use in this district that does allow multifamilies, and we have this structure on an 8,000 square foot lot, and allow him to, to convert that into a small in-law apartment. That's all. So the hardship would just be that we do have two existing structures on the lot, and we have a nonconforming condition already.
Isn't there an access right on Narragansett, too?
There is.
It's a huge parking lot.
Into this, no, the parking lot behind is for the funeral parlor.
No, there's huge parking area in between the houses. Isn't this-
Right now, there is a little driveway here. This is all patio area around this existing pool. I don't know if that's been, I didn't do the survey, the survey crew did.
It's-
In any event, the commercial mill district doesn't have a lot coverage requirement, so there is plenty of room for parking. We're not increasing any impervious area, and even if we were-
That's not where I was going.
That's not requested, so you can, you can continue.
All right. I visited the site.
Yeah.
Actually, they gave me a ladder and I went up into the upper building, because the stairs aren't there.
Right.
It looked like this was a big area for, that's already impervious for parking. It just doesn't show on your survey, I'm surprised.
Well, what I was saying is that the increased use, we will ensure that there is off-street parking for that new unit.
Wasn't there a variance request, I don't know, ten years ago?
There was, a number of years ago. Yeah, absolutely. And I actually have to get it sent you, it should be in your supplemental package, sorry, 2006, you're correct. At the time, that was however in an industrial district, not a commercial mill district. So there may have been some differing discussions at that time. This would be a one bedroom-
Wouldn't it be, wouldn't it be better rather than doing the garage, just add to the house if they wanted to have an extra bedroom rather than creating a separate apartment in that?
Well, I-
I'm asking the question.
I can only, I can only propose to you what Mr. Cabral-
No, no, I know this, I know this.
So I can't tell you how the logistics, well, what ends up happening, I mean, the addition to the existing structure.
I mean, I don't know the layout of the existing structure, but-
It is a one-level structure, so then we'd be building foundations, you know, additional-
Yeah, versus creating, creating a freestanding apartment with my crystal ball telling me at some point somebody's going to come in and say, let me split it off.
It can easily be made a condition of approval without no further subterfuge.
I realize that, but you see where we're going with you. I know you do.
And the existing garage upstairs, because I've been in it, is framed out for, there's a, it's one big open room and it's framed out with a bathroom, looked like it was going to be an office or something.
Okay.
It's not, it's not framed out or plumbed out for a kitchen.
Right.
Because that was one of the issues. We actually, I went with the building commissioner, because when they came in, they said they've already, they said they already did it, and I, we-
Well, thank God they didn't.
They were, and, and it really surprised us, and so we went out there and we inspected. And what they did is they framed it out clearly, it looked like it's a, one large room, like an office with a bathroom, and that's, and no other plumbing, so it, it wasn't plumbed out for a kitchen, and that's what we went to look at.
Yeah.
That's why I know the site, because I, they had to get a ladder, we had to climb up-
One of the other issues to this, and I think you'll, you'll agree, that there is a topographical difference, pretty substantial, from Slater heading west, and so I think the structure may have or was intended to be used as a poolhouse kind of a thing, because that is, it is almost two separate living areas on this lot because of the elevation difference. But it's a rather straightforward application, requesting a one-bedroom unit in the existing garage structure, no additions to the existing garage structure, it would just be that modification. And that would, that would bring us in closer into keeping with what's allowed in that commercial mill district. Again, if we had a conforming condition and we were seeking relief to make it a nonconforming condition, I would clearly understand a denial. But technically, we would be coming more conforming to the district by allowing this to take place.
Jim? Carolyn? Dan? David? No? Anyone here in favor of this petition? Anyone here opposed to this petition? Okay, motion to grant, motion to deny.
I'll make a motion to deny.
Motion to deny by Carolyn. Do we have a second on that motion?
I'll second.
Second, Dan Dupierre? Any discussion on the motion? All those in favor? David? Yes?
Yes.
Okay, so that petition is denied.
It does not need a repetitive petition to come for a special permit.
No, it's not.
Okay. Because I was going to let you know that there's no way the planning board could issue a repetitive petition, because we have three planning board members. So I was going to let you know that was going to be a problem.
No, it's not, it wouldn't be a problem.
Well, for a couple of months.
Victor and Catherine Palumbo, 500 Hanover Street and 82 New Boston Road, lot M1837 and 39. This is a variance request waiving minimum lot area required in the S district, proposing to convey 3,383 square feet of land from lot 39 to lot 37 on assessors map M18, leaving lot 39 with 8,703 square feet and lot 37 with 14,624 square feet of land. Good evening.
Good evening. For the record, my name is Jeff Baumann from Site Tech Engineering, here representing Victor Palumbo, the applicant for this variance request. As you can see on the plan, well, Mr. Palumbo currently resides at number 500 Hanover Street. As you can see on that property, in front of the dwelling, there's an existing parking area. That parking area is currently utilized by the property at 514 Hanover Street, which, which is lot number 36, as shown on the assessors map, M18. The reason being, the dwelling at number 500 Hanover Street was originally a barn, which was accessory to the structure on lot 36. Some time ago, back in, I believe it was the 40s or 50s, that barn was converted into the single-family dwelling that you see out on that site now. At that time of the conversion, 514 Hanover Street was used as a doctor's office on the first floor with two, I believe, two residential apartments on the second floor. So that parking area located on the front of lot 37 was for the doctor's office that was on lot 36. It was all owned by the same property owner at the time. When the house at number 500 was converted into a single-family dwelling, the properties were split off, but the, you know, the, the use of the parking area at the front of the property was maintained for the building on lot 36. Back in 2003, the applicant's son, Chris, had acquired number 82 New Boston Road, which is directly abuts the property to the south. That structure is a, it's a three-unit building, there's a commercial unit on the first floor with two residential units on the second floor. As you can see on the plan, there is some off-street parking associated with that building. They're not striped out, but I count, you could probably get about seven vehicles, you know, in the, in the parking areas on that site. At the time of that purchase, the applicant started to use the garage that was located on the adjacent property, lot 39, that his son owned, put some garage doors on the back of it, and was utilizing that to gain some additional parking area for himself, because as you can see on the, the single-family residence at 500, it's very limited, it's very tough to turn, it's very tight in there. So he started to use that garage in some of the adjacent areas to that garage. The applicant's son resided in the dwelling until 2009, when he moved back to Georgia with his wife, where she's originally from. Since then, the two, the apartment that they were living in has been rented out, so number 82 New Boston Road currently right now is entirely a rental property with a lawyer, a lawyer's office on the first floor and two residential apartments on the second floor. And I can tell you that the only areas of that property that they are using are the parking area that you see on this plan. The remaining area that we're looking to convey to lot 37 is yard area that was, you know, was, was not utilized at the time by, when they purchased the house at number 82 New Boston Road. So basically, what the applicant's looking to do is to, you know, in order to compensate for the loss of that land on his property by the parking area at the front, he's looking to convey this 3,383 square foot parcel from lot 39 to his property, which would bring his property in conformance with the lot area requirement in the single-family district. And that's basically it. I'd be happy to answer any questions that the board might have.
So I'm sorry, lot 37 is a single-family home, but then there's parking for an asphalt or company? I mean, a parking lot or?
Yeah, it, three properties, even though, you know, as shown on the planet, we're basically dealing with two properties. There is a third property involved, which is also owned by the Palumbo family. It's the applicant's brother, I believe that owns that property, and they, he has a parking area, a parking lot on the front, which, which basically, I believe, pre-exists the, the conversion of the barn to a single-family dwelling. Long time ago, there was a doctor's office at that, number 514. The first floor of that building was a doctor's office that utilized that parking area. It was all one property. And then it was divided, I believe, back in the 50s, when they converted the barn to a single-family dwelling, they separated the properties, but the parking area was already out at the front.
So 500, I just, 500, lot 37.
Correct.
The, the parking lot that's shown is part of lot 37.
Correct.
I didn't do the independent research to see whether or not there's some Eastman or something.
There's no Eastman.
So it, it really is not connected to 514.
It's, it's be used exclusively by, there is some sort of arrangement within the family, that's the way it's currently used. You know, if the board would like, I'm sure there could be any-
No, no, I'm just trying to, I'm just trying to get my head around what the Palumbo family's doing.
Currently, they don't believe in Eastmans, because they're using one another's properties in this area.
Well, what happens when they sell it down the road?
Well, I think that's part of why they're moving forward with this, because, you know, again, the, Victor has been using this, the area that's shown, shade, the shaded area on this plan for some time now, but he's looking to clean this up and get it all taken care of in the event that, because his son no longer lives at 82 New Boston Road, in the event that that property is sold, everything's straightened out. In terms of the parking area at the front, front of his property-
What I'm saying is that, that parking area is part of lot 37.
Correct, that's correct.
So it's his land, I mean, it's, it's, I'm just, if there's some restriction or some that he can't use, it's his.
It's just in understanding within the family, no legal document of record.
You've got to tell me how I'm going to get my head around, or how we're going to get around. Section 8634, number three, because I don't think the board has the authority to do what you want, where it says, "No yard or lot existing on the effective date of the ordinance from which this chapter is derived shall be reduced in dimension or area below the minimum requirement set forth in this chapter. Yards or lots created after such effective date shall meet at least the minimum requirements established by this chapter." So if we, I don't think the board has the authority to now start reducing lot sizes from what exists. I understand what you want to do, but I just don't think the board has the authority to do that. That's just my, I'm just asking, I know what you're doing.
Yeah, we're taking a nonconforming lot. Basically, what we-
And you're making this pre-existing nonconforming, which has a mixed use, in turning that into more nonconforming by getting rid of 3,383 square feet?
It's, it's an area, so we have a mixed-use building with a commercial unit and two residential units-
In an S district.
That have, in an S district, that have a yard area that's, they don't use. The residents don't, I, I understand that.
The components, I understand. It's the legal argument of the zoning board having the authority and what we're prohibited from doing under the ordinance. I just, but I know what you want to do. It makes perfect sense if it wasn't for the zoning bylaw.
Well, lot 37, lot 37 is an undersized lot by zoning regulations.
Correct.
So we would be bringing that into conformance. Yes, we would be making lot 39 nonconforming, but we would be in turn making lot 37 conforming.
I got it.
So we'd just be swapping it, and we'd be, we'd bring 37-
On one vote.
What I'm saying is we're bringing 37 into conformance that has a conforming structure on it as well. It's the only one of the three lots that we're talking about now that has a conforming structure on it. So I would think it would be in the, in the best interest to, you know, bring the, the conformant structure into conformance with the lot area requirements that currently exist. Either way, I mean, one of the lots left is going to be nonconforming. So just, again, swapping, taking it from the, the rental property where they're not using the yard area and giving it to the single-family dwelling, which has the need for the yard area.
Understood. I understand your argument. Thank you. Jim?
Yeah, I mean, I know what they want to do. With all that parking in front, it just-
David? Dan? Carolyn?
No questions.
Could I have one more thing?
Yeah, you could. Jim, yes, you can.
Okay. So the parking area in front on lot 37, unfortunately, 514, I did, I didn't show the complete structure, it, it totally blocks, I mean, the lot is, I think, about 65 feet wide, if not narrower, like 37. There's no way to get a parking area behind that building, because there is, there's a big retaining wall that's around that parking lot that I'm not showing on this particular plan, but there is some grade change there. So, you know, that parking area provides necessary off-street parking in this area as well as the, the parking area on lot 39. We would not be changing any of the off-street parking in this area, which is greatly needed, because it's, you can't park on New Boston Road, and having lived down the street, on Hanover Street for a number of years, I know the, the parking on Hanover Street is very difficult as well. So, that's all I'd like to add.
I got it. I think the other board members have it. Bill, do you have anything you want to tell us?
If you decided to, you felt that he meant the burden of proof, I think you need to require a Form A to consolidate the-
any of the off-street parking in this area, which is greatly needed because it's, you can't park on New Boston Road. And having lived down the street on Hanover Street for a number of years, I know the, the parking on Hanover, excuse me, Hanover Street is very difficult as well. So that's all I'd like to add.
I got it. I think the other board members have. Bill, do you have anything you want to tell us?
If you decided to, if felt that he met the burden of proof, I think you need to require a Form A to consolidate the area conveyed, not create a non-buildable parcel, but actually physically consolidate it in through a plan indeed.
You've got one lot then?
Correct, one lot. And that the condition that the parking lot of lot thirty-nine actually be striped per the plan that he's showing here. So it's an unstriped parking lot is not as usable as a striped parking lot. But that's if you feel that he's met the burden of proof. And I don't know how you want to deal. I'm shocked that the Palumbo folks don't put an easement here for that big parking.
At some point, I guarantee that's going to happen. The lawyers will get involved.
Probably, probably, probably after tonight. But that's just a commentary. I'm kind of been surprised it doesn't have an easement.
Is there anyone here in favor of this petition? Is there anyone here opposed to this petition? Okay, can we get a motion to grant, motion to deny?
I'll make a motion to deny. We just don't have the authority.
Motion to deny from Carolyn. Do we have a second?
Second.
Second, Jim Corkins. Any discussion on the motion? All those in favor? Okay, so this petition is denied. Thank you. Thanks, Jim. Do we have any citizen input? Anybody sign up to tell us anything?
No.
The minutes? No, okay. Any other business we need to bring before the board? Can I get a motion to adjourn?
Motion.
Motion, Dan Dupierre, second?
Second.
Second, Carolyn. All those in favor? Zoning Board of Appeals for the City of Fall River, November twenty-first, two thousand and nineteen, is hereby closed. Thank you.